Do I have a motion to convene into open session and enter into the annual public hearing for budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022?
No move.
All signed, man.
Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. The hearing began at 7:01. Before the annual budget is approved, a hearing is held to provide members of the public the opportunity to address the board about the budget as it is proposed. Those wishing to speak during the hearing will be asked to sign up in accordance with the board's public participation procedures and adhere to a time limit of five minutes per speaker. At this time, we have not yet. Being that there are no comments, I'm the public jury, I call the regular board meeting to order at 7:01. And we will start with our pledge allegiance. I would like Ms. Tammy Gallagher, our LTHS gifted coordinator, if she would come up to the podium and lead us in the flag, if that is okay? I hate to put you on the spot. But thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Navara?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Ives?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Lopez Caneva?
Here.
Next, we have a resolution recognizing AP students for the classes of 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Good evening. I apologize for the delay. Tonight, we recognize the efforts and academic achievement of 147 Lockport Township High School students from the classes of 2021, 22, and 23, whose performance within the Advanced Placement Program has resulted in recognition as AP Scholars by the College Board. Awards are given to high school students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through AP courses and exams. To receive AP Scholar recognition, a student must receive a score of three or higher on three or more Advanced Placement exams. The College Board recognizes students as Advanced Placement Scholar, granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams; Advanced Placement Scholar with Honor, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken; and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams; and Advanced Placement Scholar with Distinction, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. This resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the Advanced Placement Scholars from the spring of 2021, whereas the following students have excelled on the Advanced Placement Examination and have received award status as determined by the College Board, and thereby bringing honor and distinction to their families, school, and communities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from the classes of 21, 22, and 23 are hereby recognized for their outstanding academic achievement on the Advanced Placement Exams.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring the 147 LTHS AP Scholar students?
No move.
Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
I will be reading the names of those students who are in attendance this evening. From the class of 21, we do not have any students who are able to attend, however, we do have the parent of Mason Meyer, who is here. From the class of 22, AP Scholar Award, Jacob Ahrens. Allison Boback. Grace Christopher. Gabriel Zacco. James Gannon. Giovanna Gavin. Zoe Halatak. Matys Makoukes. Monica Makoukes. Dylan Morgan. Vialka Munoz. Brenda Parek. Noah Peake. Jack Poobens. Wafik Shakoni. Sean Savoda. Dylan Vilcek. Alexandra Wade. Jacob Zetchkowski. The following students are AP Scholar with Honor. James Kelvert. Michaela Adrian Kokchen. Logan Colom. Emily Gad. Teresa Hernandez Gonzalez. Andrew LaPresty. Sophia Marcial. Ashley Gibbs. Matthew Martinez. Colin O'Boyle. Alyssa Olson. Ronald Scheich. Michael Ungaro. The following students are AP Scholar with Distinction. Julia Bergland. Kyra DiMinordi. Abigail DiFilippo. Braden Gobert. Michael Hassel. Natalie Homerding. Tyler Jensenka. Eliza Mattson. Olivia Milker. Abigail Obradovic. Isabella Ririck. Benjamin Rourke. Benjamin Staley. And Krista Thomas. The following students are for the class of 2023 AP Scholar Awards. Charles Altman. Alexandria Crucial. And Sean Marshall. Jack Moran. Charlie Pluth. Beznik Shupaj. Monica Skibicki. And the following student is AP Scholar with Honor. Julian Merolda. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to the parents and to of these scholars, and congratulations to our LTHS scholars who have brought distinction and honor to LTHS. Thank you. Alright, next we have... Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring Ms. Tammy Gallagher for her commitment and support to our AP Scholars?
Alright, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna read and then you're gonna... Okay. This resolution is recognizing Ms. Tammy Gallagher for her daily contributions to students, particularly AP students, AP teachers, AP parents and guardians, building and district office administration, the Board of Education, and Lockport Township High School communities. Whereas Ms. Tammy Gallagher serves as gifted coordinator for the district and regularly attends training to gain appropriate experience and knowledge, coupled with her creative and logistical planning, that has enabled almost a thousand LTHS students to acquire college credit in a varied and challenging testing situation due to the COVID-19 pandemic, while supporting AP teachers as the College Board changed the nature of their expectations. Whereas Ms. Tammy Gallagher has brought honor and distinction to herself, our high school district through her tireless work ethic, commitment to others, grace under pressure, communication with stakeholders, vision for equity, and empathy for the challenges faced by AP students and AP teachers, particularly in the time of a global pandemic. Whereas Ms. Tammy Gallagher leads and supports our organization in one of the Board of Education priorities, and continues to work toward ways to increase opportunities for all students to experiencing college-level coursework and earning college credit.
Do I have now a motion to approve the resolution honoring Ms. Tammy Gallagher for her commitment and support to our AP Scholars? I move.
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Ms. Gallagher. And who is with you, if you may know?
Um, my daughter and my daughter.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, alright, well, moving on. We know that our student reports, there are none. Next, we have our AFT report, Ms. Karen Cooper.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, just, things are going well. I don't know any other way to put it. I think everybody's probably a little exhausted, kids and students, just getting back into the swing of things. Compass time, I think, is fantastic. It's a little exhausting to have more in your schedule, but I think at the end of the day, if you were to ask any staff or ask any students, we're finding a lot of good in it. I truly believe that we're making some connections with kids a lot earlier than we would have been, getting that, you know, small group size. But again, things have gone well, so it's, I think we're off to a good start, and we're looking forward to homecoming at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you. IASB Governing Board Report, Ms. Johnson.
Uh, yes. The Three Rivers Division is having their quarterly, uh, business meeting. It'll be Thursday, October 28th, at 6 o'clock at Perry Bluff Club. So if you want to go see Kathy, and the topic is gonna be Unfinished Leadership is one of the topics for the meeting. That's all there is.
Well, thank you. Just, yes, just let Kathy know if you are planning to attend this, the Three Rivers meeting, and that's gonna be October 28th at 6:00 PM at Perry Bluff. If there's something else you wanted to add to it?
Two things to add. One, I would add for board members, Unfinished Leadership is a book by two of my colleagues, Nick Pollyak and Mike Lublfield, so I'd really, I would really recommend it. Two additional things on IASB. We learned at our last meeting that there's a new state law that required all newly elected board members, that would be Mr. Travis, Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Lopez Caneva, and Mr. Navara, to sign, not only take the oath, but sign the IASB Oath of Office. And then we decided that all board members would sign the Oath of Office. So I will pass down, this is a signature for Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Navara, Mike, Mr. Travis, Mr. Lewandowski, Mr. Ives, and Mrs. Lopez Caneva. So, sign away as you will, and we will keep these on file and have, and Lopez Caneva sign them as well. Just a ceremonial thing that the state is now asking board members to do to, new January 1, to affirm their oath. The second announcement that I have for IASB business, I just learned, hot off the presses, that we have awards for two board members. Mr. Dick Ives has reached the level of Master Board Member, Level 2, so congratulations to you, Mr. Ives, based on his training, years of service, and commitment. Sure, give him a big round of applause. Well done. Well done. And then, Ms. Johnson, you know, for your longevity, the trainings you've attended, the professional development that you've done, you have maintained your Master Board Member status, so, thanks for, both of you have been on the board, but yeah, getting the professional development for... That is it.
Thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Johnson. Alright, Communications Board Report.
There's not a lot to report on. The vacancy of the Executive Director was posted. We have four very attractive candidates who have expressed interest in the position. In fact, tomorrow morning, Dr. McBride, myself, and the Executive Committee of the Foundation, we have a meeting to discuss the agreement as exactly how they want to go about it. And I believe there's a coffee plan with the candidates tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow afternoon, they'll be looking at the coffee with the candidates, but it's, it's gonna be a new direction and really get things up. And so I'm very happy about the progress, but that sort of stuff, there's nothing else to report right now.
Thank you. Alright, Legislative Report.
Mrs. Lopez Caneva and I are fighting over the microphone. Really, the legislature's currently in session right now. There isn't much that, there are bills that are making their way through the legislature, but there's really nothing that the legislature is acting on right now. Most of the news is on the COVID front. We've received several documents this fall, FAQs regarding revised quarantine procedures and the state's vaccination mandate, and actually, today is the day that that vaccination mandate, employees have to vaccinate or participate in our shield testing, one or the other, and so we began doing that today. We continue to provide, staff members, I want to thank Mr. Kandari and Mrs. Coy for meeting with so many staff members to explain the vaccination mandate and to walk, walk people through that. Additionally, Friday, we received two things, an executive order, and then also the emergency rules that go along with that executive order. What that executive order does is it reaffirms or confirms exclusion procedures. We operate under something called an exclusion tree. This is not a new concept. The state has provided us, the Illinois Department of Public Health, for years, provided that to us in the case of vaccinations for measles, mumps, rubella, meningitis, and those types of vaccinations, and what would happen if there's an outbreak of those diseases, and what you would do is not vaccinate students in that case. This is obviously updated for COVID-19. What it does is, it was released on Friday in order to put the weight of an executive order and emergency rules from ISPE behind the idea of excluding students for seven, 10, or 14 days, based on what their COVID situation might be, whether they've been in close contact, they're a positive case, or they have symptoms. So it reifies that. That is all on the legislative front.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Communications, and in absence of Dr. Shaw, I'm going to be reading a card that we received from Ms. Dana Prior, who is an Assistant Business Manager. Please accept my heartfelt thanks for your kindness, generosity, and compassion while my family and I have been coping with my mother's illness and her passing. I would not have made it through. Thank you so much for your expression of sympathy. It was kind of you to remember, Marge O'Leary. Moving on to Freedom of Information requests. You can see in your board packet there, we had one. Next, we have the Public Comments on Agenda Items. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The Board President will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district expects mutual respectability and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. And at this time, we have no one. Next, we have our approval items. I just need, I'm, I'm sorry. You do.
Is it, is it on an agenda topic? Then we would have you, we have another section that's, uh, public comments, not on agenda topics, so we could, we could... Yeah, we could have you sign in. Why don't we have you sign in right now? You know, we could just get that down, and maybe Mrs. Wheeler, if you could assist with that, if you don't mind?
That's fine. No, that's fine. Okay, moving on, we'll, moving on to our approval items. I just need a motion to, for the approval of our regular meeting minutes and the approval of our closed session meeting minutes of August 16, 2021. I'll second that. Alright, it's been motioned, alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? and second by Ms. Lopez Cuniva. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson? Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
All right, next, we need approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 28th, 2021 special board meeting, and the approval of closed session meeting minutes of August 28th, 2021 special board meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr., Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
All right, need approval of our board member expenses for September 2021. Just need a motion for that. I can second that also. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Ms. Lopez Cuniva. Are there any questions to that? Hearing none. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of our Treasurers Report for September 2021. Need a motion for that?
So I'll move.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions to that Treasurers Report? Hearing none. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
Next, we have our superintendent update.
All right, great. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, on this update. First, it is public safety and security officers today. One of the things at the state, we have all sorts of people that are recognized. Just have everybody give Dave Cohen a big round of applause. We recognize his work. A little bit about Dave, Dave is a veteran. He's also a veteran of the Lockport Police, and then in retirement, uh, for Lockport Police came, you know, into this very important role in, in our district. So, thank you for all you do, Dave. Uh, we also hosted last week, last Thursday night, the Lockport Women's Club. Uh, they were here conducting their, their regular September business, but also had a presentation, a little bit about what we're trying to do with public communication, and a quick sneak peek of some of the renovations that we were able to do over the summer, particularly in the Technology Assistance Center, our library, and then our soon-to-open, um, café that some of our students with disabilities will be staffing. Finally, we might all be home, who knows, at 9:00 PM tonight, but, uh, Fox News 32 is running a, um, profile of the work that we're doing to age appropriately educate students about sexting. Uh, probably for me, one of the most important safety issues that, that students should know about, particularly because, uh, when it's online, it is forever. And it, it has a life that goes on and on and on and on. And, um, the dark web is filled with, uh, sexting posts that have gone, gone, gone on forever. And so just everyone understanding of the, the consequences, the repercussions of, of that behavior. Uh, for my report, certainly COVID-19 pandemic still, uh, really has quite a bit, um, you know, of, of our attention. But I wanted to highlight to the board two things that we are, are working, uh, just making the focus of this school year. And, uh, both have sort of antecedents related to our work last year with DMG, the audit, the work that we went through, uh, to really consider what is happening with, uh, students who struggle. And sometimes when you say students who struggle, you think, well, that's not the 147 students that we just saw here, right? But quite actually, uh, advanced placement students, they find their moment of struggle too. They're taking very, very difficult coursework. It can be incredibly challenging. And there are moments, many moments, when they need teacher assistance, uh, where they need a teacher response. They need reteaching. And that's really true from, from students who might be in something like advanced placement to, uh, to students who are in specialized programs here at school. So the two programs that were really, really making a focus here this year are Compass and Professional Learning Communities. Compass is occurring four days a week, spent the first, uh, three weeks of school, 12 sessions, really helping students understand. And they meet, uh, on those four days in something we're calling Homeport. And Homeport is where students literally learn how to have the self-management, the executive functioning skills in order, really to navigate a very complex system. Uh, we know that when students go off to college, sometimes it's not the academics that are difficult for them. It's being on your own, balancing life, having a schedule, making a calendar, self-managing that is the most difficult. Uh, Compass has now pivoted under Dr. Green and Dr. Green's leadership to provide opportunities, uh, for students to see their teachers during that time. Most commonly, when I've wandered halls, I see students meeting with each other in small groups, preparing for tests, getting projects done. I see teachers meeting with students. I see students moving and going to classes and to teachers that they need to see. Um, it has also become a, a place where we can do things like this week, uh, we'll have, later in this week, we'll have a Homeport session, really to prepare students for homecoming and to help and to understand how the campuses will function during that time. The second, um, piece, uh, is Professional Learning Communities. It's a long-time structure here, um, at LTHS. Uh, we made a shift last year. One of the things that happened is we learned that really to meet on your professional team, all of our classroom teachers, deans, and school counselors are organized in a Professional Learning Community teams. But like anything you do of significance, time matters. Previously, we were meeting every day, but it really turned out to be about a 25-minute to a half-hour a day. One of the things we learned in the pandemic is that a good chunk of time, really to sit with your colleagues and focus in on student achievement, gets more done once a week, uh, than a series of very small start-and-stop, uh, meetings. Also, the early feedback from students is it gives them just a slowdown in the middle of the week to gather themselves off and, and maybe get, get reorganized. So two structures that we're really using to, to drive achievement, um, in, in our, in our school. And it comes directly out of lessons from the pandemic and comes directly out of our work last year with, uh, district management groups. Uh, in terms of COVID, what are we working on? We're looking at, um, COVID spread and all three of the zip codes that we serve. We're still in substantial transmission in all three zip codes. Good news is the positivity rate is coming down. Cases per 100,000 have stayed strong, so we hope that that, that follows suit. We have fully deployed S.H.I.E.L.D. testing right now. I think the benefit of S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, uh, is that we have staff members, vaccinated or unvaccinated, who are using it, not even required. Um, some not even required by the vaccine mandate. They're in situations, social situations, situations of the weekend where they might be exposed, so it gives them peace of mind. Right now, we're finding about anywhere between six to seven, uh, positive cases of students who were asymptomatic, did not realize they had COVID, but they do have COVID. Where that's really helped us is typically, one student who's a positive COVID leads to about six to 10 other students in quarantine for seven to 14 days. We've been able to, uh, break that chain, avoid having those larger groups of students in quarantine, and then the work that it means for nurses, teachers, the student, and the family. Yeah, Mrs. Johnson?
So what does that do if they're on the bus?
If they're on the bus, that's the area right now where we have done most amount of quarantine, because students are vast, but they're not in all cases three feet apart. But what it really helps is, for example, if we identified early on that a student was riding the bus and COVID positive, we can remove that student from the bus sooner so they can stay at home and get over COVID. And also, you know, it might be day three, day four, day five, that they don't have symptoms and don't know that they have COVID, where they're impacting more students who are on that bus.
So do you test the whole bus?
No, we do not test the whole bus. The S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, uh, the board has policy about bi-, any kind of biometric testing we do. S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is only for those families who have said, I, I would like to be in the S.H.I.E.L.D. program. Um, families that are not in S.H.I.E.L.D. program have different options. If they're in close contact, they can, um, return to school on day eight after being exposed, if they have no symptoms and they have a negative test. Uh, and then they could say, I'm going to wait the full 14 days and not test to just see if symptoms develop. So there's now a range of, of opportunities. But S.H.I.E.L.D. seems to be working as it was intended. I think one of the positive things about S.H.I.E.L.D. being up and running is it's given about 200 of our employees, uh, because the range is great under the vaccine mandate. Um, if you're a, if you're a, um, out-of-building coach, and you're just coaching one sport, if you're on our payroll, you're subject to that vaccine mandate. So it creates about a pool of 200 people, at least in giving them a choice. Do you want to get vaccinated or do you want to participate with S.H.I.E.L.D.? So, uh, that, that at least supports people's choices and, uh, gives them at least options. Uh, finally, um, one unintended COVID, uh, consequence is people know about the labor slowdown. People know about, um, equipment being slowed down. Uh, we hope by now that the Technology Assistance Center, the library, and the café would be open. The Technology Assistance Center is open, and we're looking forward to giving board members a tour of that. It's time for you to replace your Chromebooks. We'll have our crew of students there who are running that, that center do that. Uh, but we should be in about two or three weeks, fully open, fully vacuum business. It's a, it's a great space and looking forward to having board members go through. I'll take any questions.
No, I think you were very thorough. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay, next we have the approval of our consent agenda items, number two to number nine. Do I have a motion for that?
So I'll move.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
Next, we have our approval for our budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Need a motion for that? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Um, the board has been given, this is the time of year that we, the board has to adopt the legal budget for the school district for fiscal year 2022. Back in, uh, July, the board adopted the tentative budget. This is the final budget with the line item detail. There were a number of detailed items for the board to review, and they're attached in your packet. In addition, there's also the legal budget document that the Illinois State Board of Education requires each of you to sign. So tonight, before you leave, after your vote, at the end of the meeting, indicate on your, on that legal budget form, Kathy will ask you to sign indicating your vote. Okay? This is the one document that all board members have to sign, as opposed to just the secretary and the president. I just want to highlight a few things. Um, there were some things that we highlighted, that I highlighted in your memo. Um, those are all the, the high-level, like, largest items in our budget, right? Um, ultimately, the board will be receiving a full narrative budget, which documents in language as opposed to numbers, um, more history about where all the budget numbers come from, what things impact the district. That will be coming at a future meeting. Um, but in the meantime, the main things that are highlighted here are the things that are the largest parts of the budget. So the first thing that I'm sure that the board members noticed on our summary is there is an intended spend-down. So the first thing that Ives tend to go to when you look at a spreadsheet of numbers is, oh, there's a negative number there, right? So I'd like to point out that that spend-down was as discussed for planned projects. So, um, the other, the thing that you can see in our capital projects fund is that we have $2.2 million of capital projects. Those two proj-, the projects in that are three things. It's the finish-up of the media center, technology area, ca-, coffee area for the students to learn in. Um, that is the one, is the biggest piece of that. Okay? Um, the other piece in there is the, um, uh, we have a small part that's going to be on the board agenda tonight, starting of a roofing project at East Campus, right? So the start of that project means architect fees to plan the project. So that partially is in there as well. Then the other project that the board has going on right now, that the board has previously approved, is finishing up the central structural repairs. So all of those things are, make up that capital projects number, and that, the spend-down is less than that number. And it's planned, we're going to use part of our reserves in the operations and maintenance fund to pay for those projects, towards those projects. Um, the other pieces of information I wanted to point out are the large revenue pieces and the large expenditure pieces. So the district has, the district's revenue, 80% of the district's revenue is property taxes. The property taxes included in this budget are half of, um, one tax year's levy and half of the other. So half of 2020 and half of 2021, coming in November and then in, final in December. Tentative in November and final in December will be the 20, the board will have to approve the 2021 tax levy. The board last December approved the 2020 tax levy, and it's collected in this, half in the spring, half in the fall. So the fall collections are in this budget for 2020, and the spring collections for the next year will be in this, are in this budget as well. Um, you, the percentages of those are, um, 54% of the 2020 is in this year, because last spring, we didn't collect a full 50% like we normally would due to the county changing the way that they allowed people to pay their taxes. They allowed more time, which made it so that we didn't collect the money on the same timeframe. Okay? I'm projecting in the spring that it might be the same. Okay? So I'm only projecting 45% collected in the spring instead of the 50 that we have historically collected. On the expenditure side of things, oh, the other piece of revenue that I wanted to highlight was Esser funds. So this budget includes Esser II funds that the district is receiving. Um, the, the, there were three phases of CARES Act money. Esser I funds were primarily spent by the district here last year. Um, Esser II will be spent primarily this year, um, and it's being spent on things like compass stipends in the teacher contract, some remote learning assistance, some cyber investig-, the cyber investigation and consulting that, that Dr. McBride speaks of, you know, spoke of in previous meetings, um, health services support, improved ventilation projects. Those are all being paid for out of our Esser funds. Esser III money, the district has not applied for yet, but will be applying for later this year, and that will be expected to use next year and partially the year after that, due to the timeframe that the government's allowing us to spend. On the expenditure side of things, the only things I need, I wanted to point out were basically salaries and benefits. I already talked about capital projects, but the other big pieces are salaries, benefits, debt service. Salaries and benefits of the district make up 67% of our total expenditures and 74% of operating expenditures. And by operating, I mean excluding the debt service, excluding capital, capital outlay, okay, capital projects. So our operating expenses, the education, the operations and maintenance, the transportation, 74% of those expenditures are salaries and benefits, because the district employs over 500 employees. Salaries increased based on collective bargaining agreements, as well as the, the raises that the board approved last June. Okay? There's approximately 5% that those things increased. Employee benefits decreased approximately the same percentage. That decrease is related to a combination of things. But employee benefits encompasses pension payments, so Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, um, small TRS payments that the employer pays, as well as health insurance, dental insurance, vision, vision we don't pay, but dental, uh, life insurance, all those things that we pay for our employees. Those decreased based on some changes that were made into the, in, in the plan to keep costs low, both for employees and for, um, the district. Finally, the debt service fund, the reason that I pointed that out is so that the district can, the board can see what the, the district has outstanding in debt. We have very low debt, actually, compared to other districts. We have two bonds outstanding, and, um, those are highlighted for the, for the board in what was given here. And I'll ask, answer any other questions. Who won?
Bullet point one. Can you explain a little bit more, I mean?
I'm sorry.
Is that due to the fact of the CARES money that's causing us the?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of the question.
Bullet point one.
Yes.
What you said, our expenditures going to exceed our income?
Uh huh.
Is that due to the CARES Act money?
No, it has nothing to do with our operating or the grant money. That, the, what we're, what our expenditures are exceeding is the projects. Our capital projects are causing our revenue, our expenditures to exceed our revenue. So we're purposefully spending money out of our fund balance to pay for a capital project. It has nothing to do with the operating revenues.
So we have the money, it's just that when you put it in the budget, it looks like?
It's in our fund balances. So it's like, it's like it's in our savings account, right? It's kind of a pretty simple way to explain it, but the fund balances of the district are the cash reserves of the district.
Okay.
Okay? We are a cash basis school district. We report all of our finances on a cash basis, which means all inflows coming in, any deposits are revenue, any expended, any checks cut are expenditures. So the fund balances are the cash we have on hand. So that cash has grown over the years due to a whole slew of things. But some of the reasons that it could, that it, some of the reasons that our reserves have grown have been conservative spending. They've also been things like our operations and maintenance director finding grants to offset some of his projects that we would normally have used reserves for because operations and maintenance is one of those funds that we tend to in, purposefully keep some fund balance because to replace the roof on a building like this is going to take millions of dollars. It's not going to take just a thousand dollars. You know, it's not like, it's not replacing your roof at home. It's a much larger scale. So the big projects that we have to do to maintain this, these buildings, we keep reserves on purpose for that. And so then when they build up, we spend them on a project to remodel, to repair. And that's what's causing this. It's we're using money that we have saved in fund balance to pay for the projects. That's why, if you look, Luann, at the capital outlay expenditures in the capital projects fund, it's $2.2 million. Our deficit is only 1.3.
So and that's the, you know, ultimately the deficit that the board would have to manage if it becomes a deficit. And the idea there is that with fund balances, investing taxpayer money in its most important asset, which are the buildings. That's the, those are the real assets of the community. Using fund balances, those cash reserves, to invest in the buildings as opposed to, for example, the tax levy process to say, we'll pay for those expenditures through an increased tax levy. In essence, it's a strategy to use the money already in our coffers because the expectation, the community invests that in our buildings.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't like to see red anymore.
Yeah, no one likes to see red. But that red, this budget lays out something that could happen, not something that will happen, depending on recommendations Mrs. Coy makes to us, decisions the board makes to manage your, your fund balances to, to avoid, you know, that actually being an unbalanced budget. At the end of the day, this is a balanced budget, but that's management that we would have to do over the next year and five years.
I would just concern because a lot of entities are getting a lot of money infused into it, you know, CARES Act money, American Rescue Act money. So that money's going to go away. But then, you know, if you have all those expenses, you know, there's going to be nothing to replace it.
Right. And you're very astute. For public schools, the CARES Act is called SRR.
Yes.
And what we've tried to do as an administrative team and our recommendation view is to cover expenses that we're having now related to pandemic rather than creating costs that we'll have to continue paying when that money is gone.
Yeah.
You know, carrying those costs forward, you're exactly right, would create a burden on us that once those funds are gone in September 2024, we don't have another funding source to, to, to fill up those SRR monies.
And like the American Rescue, we get a big chunk there. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Any other questions of the board?
No, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. Thank you.
Looking forward for that final budget. They'll be coming.
Okay. All right, just need then a motion for the approval of our budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So move.
Right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions, further questions? Hearing none. Okay, roll call. Johnson?
Can you comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. And just as a reminder that before you leave the meeting, who has this budget? Is it Kathy that has the budget?
Kathy has.
Yes. Just make sure that, you know.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Can you pass it down?
Can you pass it down?
No. I guess.
I would recommend maybe signing. There's so many different signatures that you might want to wait, you know, just to make sure we get, we all get it.
Okay, yes. All right, next we have the authorization school maintenance grant application. Just need a motion for that.
And I just would make a note as you're considering that, that this is kind of thing Mr. Thompson does. We need to replace our, our cooling tower here, which is generally about a, about a 600 ton chiller is about half a million dollars through a grant through COMED. We brought that down to about half. Through this grant, through the state, we might even be able to bring that down by, by up to another 50,000, so.
Is this particular because if, I don't know, 101 match?
In this particular, up to $50,000.
But nonetheless, those things.
We, we have gotten some grants, some, some building grants. This one probably, I think, has a very good chance in the state because it's related to energy efficiency and it's related to ventilation. So I think it's got, it's got a good potential. But it does have to be approved by board to be submitted to the state.
So move. Need a promotion, right?
Yes.
So move.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Lewandowski. All right. Roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Next, I need just a motion for the approval of memorandum of understanding with DLA, who are architects, to perform an in-depth room assessment survey.
I noticed a typo there. It's roof assessment.
Roof, okay. So it's not roof. Okay.
My apologies, my apologies. Roof, for more important things at East Campus.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion by Lopez Caniva, seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions to that? Just roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Yes. Next, we have the approval of the tax rate objection settlement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any further questions on this? All right, roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have our bus driver salary adjustment. Just need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion. Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that? All right, roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Right, next we're moving on to policy consideration. Press 107, first reading.
Yes, we do have some policy tonight. And there's really, there's not, there's not a lot of major changes here. Board members should be able to pull this up on your computer if you cannot, because we don't have the kind of projection in here. Mrs. Maxwell does have copies of the slides. So if you just flag her down, she'll bring a copy of the slides to you. These are actually all in all very, very light changes in Press 107. Press 107 was actually released in June. Over the summer, we had a variety of things on our, our agenda. I will walk you very quickly. I'm going to make a quick note of some of the policies that have only changed because of the legal footnotes, no revisions. The district's legal status, policy 1, 1:10, just updated footnotes and legal references, nothing the board has to act on. Reminder, the board would vote on this next month. Policy 1:20 is about district organization. It suggests listing all of the intergovernmental agreements that we have. I am not recommending that you update this policy, that you leave it as is so that the board, there's no requirement that you list all of your intergovernmental agreements. Once you put this in the policy, if you do list them all, you would have to revise this policy if you have a new intergovernmental agreement. And we're having intergovernmental agreements with the city, with the police, with our, our different schools. So you'd have to keep on coming back to this policy. It's, it's not required. So my recommendation is not to, to make that change. Policy 1:30, our board in 1997 elected to make the mission statement of the district. It's school district philosophy. Press suggested a universal state school philosophy. I would not recommend adopting this. We should only change the mission statement if, if the board did a retreat, if the board had public comment or public input, and staff input, and parent input, stakeholder input. So I do not recommend that you adopt this because it would change the district's mission statement. And that should only be done, I think, under very, very careful consideration. Policy 2:10, and of course, board members, stop me if I'm moving too fast. This is about school district governance and it actually makes a direct reference to the Open Meetings Act in terms of the act in Illinois that governs all of the procedures that the board has. It uses Open Meetings Act as a direct reference. I would recommend that you adopt this policy change. It's a very important act. It should be in there. Policy 2:20, the powers of the board unchanged, just legal references and footnotes, updated cases, school district elections, no change as well, just legal footnotes and references. Policy 2:130, just a slight change to the board superintendent relationship. It, it's more specific. In the previous policy, it just says that you hire the superintendent. In this particular change, it specifies that the superintendent is in charge of the administration by delegating the board's authority to operate the district and provide leadership to staff. I recommend you update this. This is in keeping with ISBE and how the, the board superintendent relationship is intended to work. 2:240, board policy development. This recommends an optional, not a state required, and the board is very familiar with this, use of inclusive gender pronouns. They then, they're as a single or dual pronoun that an individual might want to use. I would say that this is appropriate for future discussion. The intent here is any kind of discrimination to avoid, to eliminate, any kind of discrimination based on sex, gender, or sexual orientation. The board already has very well-developed policy to prevent that discrimination. And the, the use of inclusive gender pronouns is something that I would encourage the board to discuss before recommending adoption of this press policy. It's an optional component that just is worth more consideration, especially since we have policy that prevents any kind of discrimination. Policy 3:30 is chain of command. It remains unchanged. It just has references. 5:10 is equal opportunity employment update. It gets more specific about convictions. Often times there's been confusion in the state where you cannot be employed by a school district or hold a teaching license. And sometimes the language is vague. It seems like any conviction would, would be that case. Really, there are, there are states, especially with felonies and certain classes of convictions that disbar you from working in a school. This clarifies that, that it's not all legal convictions. If you're convicted for speeding, running a red light, that does not disbar you from working in a school, for example. Hiring processing criteria unchanged. Using animals in the education program. I tweeted something out about therapy dogs, very popular. Apparently, our staff would like to have therapy dogs here. We do have a policy for that, remains unchanged. Migrant students, 6:145. It aligns this policy with federal law that is very similar to what we have to do with McKenney Vento and what we have to do with language learners. What are the types of services or special education, for that matter, that we have to provide for students who are migrant students? So it just aligns to that, that federal law and that's the recommendation of ISBE. English language learners, similarly. This is a policy that I recommend accepting. It indicates that we have an affirmative because of the language relate to make sure that English language learners and their parents, if they speak a different language at home, have an understanding of how they can be involved in their child's education. And we, we work to provide that information. 6:170, no change, just policy footnotes. 6:235, updates the definition of an electronic network. Previously, it just said internet, but we know we have wireless, we have infrastructure, we have servers, we have Chromebooks. We have become very sophisticated. So it actually defines in clearer terms all the different electronic capacities that most school districts have. I would strongly recommend adopting that. Assemblies and ceremonies, 6:255, no change, just policy footnotes. 6:260, a change, complaints about curriculum, instructional materials, or programs. Press policy has always had, if parents, community members have objectionable material, but this gives up a process. Previously, the process was in our collective bargaining agreement. It was a form that a individual filled out to go to an individual teacher. In this particular case, the state is recommending that any complaints about curriculum or instructional materials go through the uniform grievance procedure. The procedure we use in the district really to steward any kind of complaints, disagreements that are formal and official in nature. There's, I think, many benefits for that policy. I think both for anyone who's lodging a complaint, wants an alternative curriculum, also for our teachers, just individually receiving that can, can create a situation for them that, that might be more appropriate to be handled at the district level. 7:220, bus conduct. It basically aligns bus conduct to our handbook. Treats bus conduct just like conduct in the hallways. 7:230, misconduct by students with disabilities, no change. 7:280, communicable in chronic infectious diseases, only an updated footnote. And then finally, last but not least, 8:90, parent organizations and booster club. This policy puts specific language that the board and the district are not responsible for business or conduct of parent organizations or what they post on their websites or their social media. Those organizations, band boosters, music boosters, different athletic boosters are aligned with the school, are parent organizations, but they are, are not working at your best, the hasten and their, their messages and, and their conduct and, and websites are not, are not your websites. Those are all policies. Any questions?
One comments there.
And we'll be back next month for approval.
Thank you. All right, next. Public comments not listed on the agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which would be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district respects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per, per Board Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. Miss, we will start with Ms. Reagan Hayes.
Hello. This is only my second attendance of a board meeting, but I'm sure that I can safely assume that every meeting gives the same over-embellished presentation in order to inflate the egos of the uninspiring and truly mediocre. In fact, I think that even mediocre is a generous term when it comes to referring to what you are all capable of. You're all very good at deceiving people, your superiors, and I truly believe that you're deceiving yourselves. Because I actually connect with these kids. I know them. I've been checking in with my friends, the people who go to this school, and they're not impressed. In fact, they're disappointed, even with how low the standard has lowered. I conducted a survey of your current students, and out of all the responses to every question, it came back with a 12% positive reception, a 29% indifferent or neutral reception, and a 59% negative reception. But I'm sure that 59 doesn't seem much compared to the 74% that you guys allow your salaries, right? So maybe that doesn't matter to you. Some of the responses to the open-ended prompts were as follows. Great year if we didn't have masks, too many fights. I have already cried in class three times. I can tell my mental health is going way down. Today, a boy with autism was beat up, and this is truly heartbreaking and is unacceptable. This is truly disgusting, and I'm embarrassed to be from a school where this can happen. The food is bad and separate tables are annoying. I don't have the time to do all this work and get enough sleep. We have sports and work, and the teacher should respect that. My history teacher doesn't teach. He has his student teacher teach and comes out of his room every so often to yell at us. Masks on the bus are insufferable. There are bugs. There are a bunch of them, and they're gross. Mr. Voight didn't allow several students to use the bathroom at various points throughout the day. Are you, are you all still proud? Because these are your students. These are their words. These are the kids that still go here. Do you still want to praise yourselves after hearing what those kids have to say about you and your school? Last school board meeting, you all talked about the promise of Compass, and you also did it today. And you all seem very proud of your Compass program. Here are some responses to ask what they think about it. It's mostly a waste of time. One student simply said stupid. I think for the most part, it's a waste of time. Mostly a stupid class to try and get help, though it doesn't help. It feels weird when teachers try and force you to be friends. Teachers are very strict on what we can work on, and it's okay, I guess. Yeah, it truly sounds like Compass is a big hit. I think these kids are so glad that you've shortened their class time to make them run around the halls of your school chasing their teachers to try and get some clarity. It's embarrassing that a bunch of full-grown adults in charge of these kids' educations came up with that and thought it sounded like a good idea. Even more embarrassing that you have the gall to sit here and give a sermon.
Ms. Reagan, may I stop you for a moment there? Did you know, I mean, just in reading, you know, the comment where listed, that you would be respectful of us?
I am embarrassed.
I, I know you are embarrassed, but please be respectful.
You, you asked for mutual respect, though. You asked for mutual respect. I, you, that's mutual. I expect mutual. You can give the same energy that I'm giving to you. That's mutual. Do you know what mutual means? Because that's what it means.
I'm just saying, Ms. Haze, is that the name calling, okay?
I, what, what name?
At the very beginning of your speech. But go ahead, go ahead. You can continue on.
Oh, can I? Even more embarrassing that you have the gall to sit here and give a sermon on how amazing it is. Especially the woman here who just lied to all of your faces and said that these kids are happy with Compass. It seems to me that the only thing you are, are capable of is denial. Your plausible deniability scheme would be commendable if it weren't so shameful. You truly have a lot of these people.
Ms. Hayes, here's the thing, I want to support our board president. You cannot come to a podium and call people liars. You can state your opinion. You can tell that you've done.
Can I state my opinion, though?
This is a public meeting. It's not a public meeting, it's a meeting of this public board that you're a guest at, all right?
Yeah.
Our board policy does not allow you to call anyone a liar, allows you to call anyone mediocre, allows you to say, did any of these professionals have thought up something that isn't well thought out? That kind of language? It's not something that this board permits, and it's their meeting.
Are you aware that a lot of these teachers are not even listening to you right now? They're working on their own presentations for their classes right now. They're not even listening to you, and you're going to tell me that I don't have the right to free speech?
Ms. Hayes, this is not your meeting. So if you're going to.
This is public comment! This is public comment! I have the right to this!
Ms. Hayes, if you're going to call people mediocre or liars, you do not have a right to that.
Excellent, you won't get called mediocre.
Mr. Hayes. Mr. Colley, can you remove Mr. Hayes, please? Ms. Hayes.
This is ridiculous!
No, you have to have respect, and you have to have decorum.
You all are disgusting!
And that's why you're leaving.
Yeah, I'm leaving because I'm walking out on my own! This is disgusting!
All right, moving on, Ms. Jay Roddy.
Um, excuse me, can I speak about something before we continue on to the next speaker? If it doesn't mind to just have conversation with our board real quickly. How exactly are we measuring the effectiveness of Compass? Do, um, like, are we?
I think Mr. Navarro, Mr. Rody's. Oh, no, oh, wait, go for it, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to like make you.
No, I think, let's, let's have Mr. Roddy first speak. And then, no, that's okay, that's all right. And then we can probably have the board discussion, because I don't want to break this up, okay? We'll start with this, and then we'll follow it up, okay?
Okay, so at the last meeting, when I was up on this podium, I did ask the school if you were going to provide an assumption of liability agreement to the guardians and the parents of the students in regards to the mask mandates, in the event of any adverse effects. I did receive an email, I believe, from Mr. McBride, that you were not going to provide us with that assumption agreement. But you didn't say why. So I did respond and asked why. Now, I know you're not going to answer that question now, because I prefer it in an email anyway, so I could share it with the rest of the community. So I would like to know why we're not going to get an assumption of liability agreement. One thing I want to say for teachers, if you are listening or if you end up seeing this, don't be bullied or feel that you are going to lose your jobs if you do not get a mandated vaccine, because the mandate is not law. I would urge you, and I would urge you to talk to your unions and push an assumption of liability agreement on the vaccine and make any school district or any employer responsible of any adverse effects. In the event, unlikely, maybe, but in the event, someone needs to take that responsibility. I'm also aware of two children last week that have passed out due to masks at after-school activities that were taken away in ambulances. I don't know if it was from exhaustion or what, but maybe that's one of the reasons that you didn't want to assume that liability. I think you need to look into it a little bit deeper. I'd like to comment also, on the August 28th retreat with Jeffrey Cohen, you were in violation of the Open Board Meeting Act, basically because he was not on the agenda, and you kept him in for closed session. A closed session, that I might add, was for four and a half hours. And let's be honest, it was a seeding session. See, what you don't understand is that Jeffrey Cohen, who was brought in by the school board, what he does, he does DEI training, okay? And it's basically critical race theory, a zebra with different stripes. You need to look into it. Seeding is the terminology that a lot of school boards are using. Tinley used it, I believe, that even Lockport uses it now as well. Basically, what they do is they take the, the board and they plant the seed into this type of theory. And then they try to plant that seed, and they ask the teachers to do it on their own time and take these curriculums. And then they offer the teachers time against their, their next, what would be the proper terminology? Like when you're five years and they have more certifications or up, they offer that as time due, so to say, towards that. So we know what it is. We know what you did, and you guys did violate it. With that being said, I think that we need to concentrate a little bit less on pronouns and let's stand behind the teachers, okay? Let's not force them to do something. Now, don't get me wrong, you want to wear a mask, that's fine. You don't want to wear a mask, that's fine. You want to get a vaccine, that is fine. You do not want to get a vaccine, that is fine. Do not threaten people. It's not right, okay? You may be, or you may not be aware, but last week, three court cases were warned in the state of Illinois regarding mask mandates, 13 in the past couple of months. You might want to look into Thomas DeVore. You might, as a board, want to look into what he is doing, and he has won all of them, okay? It may be coming to a school district near you. I would suggest that the board, the members of the board, not the superintendent, you guys look into it independently, think for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Karen, Ms. Kari Handiak. I think I got the right pronunciation of your name, of your last name. Yes.
Hello, all school board members, superintendent, everybody else. My name is Kari Handiak, and my son, Brian, is in the class of 2022. He's a senior this year, and I've had two other children go through Lockport. I'm here to discuss the community service hours that are required for the class of 2022. So Lockport Township High School, 205, students, it's said that they shall complete no less than 40 hours of community service to graduate. It is representative of 10 hours per year of enrollment. So what I'd like to shine a light on is, my son, of course, he's in the class of 2022, which means he was here 2019, 2020, 2021, and currently this upcoming year. So it was made known to me that there was a 50% reduction in the mandated community hours for the class of 2020, so they reduced the requirement to 20 hours, as opposed to the 40, which supposedly represents 10 per year. And for the class of 2021, it was also reduced to 20. But somehow, this year, the requirement went back up to 40 for the class of 2022. So if you look at this just from a logical perspective reasoning, the class of 2022 has been here for four years. They have been in the midst of the same thing that the class of 2020 and 2021 have gone through, which is called COVID, which is called a global pandemic, which we are in right now. And I would submit to you that they're still dealing with this right now. It hasn't gone away. So the community service hours are designed to be earned, as I said, 10 per year. I'm sorry if I repeat myself. And this is, if you look at this in respect, it's cumulative. It's, it's somewhat like a transcript. So you're earning the 10 hours every year that you're in high school, which is how you get to 40. So if it's cumulative, we already know, and the school board has acknowledged and admitted that there was a disruption for the year of 2020, when the pandemic hit. And also for the class of 2021, they extended grace and mercy, however you would like to say it. And they said, you know what, we're going to give those classes a break. We're not going to require 40 hours, but we're going to reduce it to 20. So I stand here, and I have a student who I wouldn't like to get into detail, because I didn't want to get personal. But many of these kids, it is worth saying and shining a light on, there has been a physical and emotional impact the past two years on these students. And I would also like to say that they're still in the middle of this right now. So I'd like to use an analogy, which I think we're all familiar with. If you're on an airplane, and you're on that airplane with your children, and the cabin air is compromised in some way, we've always been instructed by the flight attendants, it's important that you take that mask and you put that on your face, because you give yourself self-care before you administer to others. And I think that this class of 2022 is a lot like that. They're still in the midst of self-care right now. So to prioritize this burden, if, maybe, maybe that's not the right word, but this, this responsibility of this community service, when they're in the midst of navigating through all of the trauma that they're going through now, I think it's unreasonable that the board made the adjustment for the prior two classes, and they're not doing it for this year, when they've been impacted by it. So the class of 22 should have a minimum adjustment of a 25% reduction to their community hours, which is fair. The school board approved and gave that to the class of 2020, 2021. They actually reduced theirs by 50%. The impact that COVID has had on these students, I could go on about that, okay? And they're still in the midst of it. So the same reasoning should definitely apply to the class of 2022. They were sophomores and juniors at that time. So I would appeal to the board and ask that you look at this again and recognize that it's unfair to have that requirement on them. Now, it has been said to me, and I won't say who, but I've talked to a couple administrators, it has been said regarding the community hours that they've, what was the word? Let me see, I want to get it. But they've, they presented it in a different way, so they expect the class of 22 to make up for it. And what that really translates to is they're not acknowledging the two years that they lost, and they lost it. They're just saying, okay, do catch up now in nine months. So I'm just here to submit to you that I think you should revisit this and look at this. I guess I don't know how to end it. Do you vote on that now, or I'm not, I don't know what to say?
May I ask a quick question?
No.
Not to, to my fellow board members, since we're discussing that.
Yes. Our, our superintendent, Dr. Murray, will follow up with you. Okay, that's why we get asked for your address and, you know, your telephone number, so he'll be calling you on that.
So does that mean it just affects me personally? Oh, because collectively, I'm really presenting this collectively. That's kind of how I roll. I'm not just thinking about my own student. And I have never come before you and challenged community hours with my two prior students that went through Lockport. So that's it then.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll have our information report, principal's report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware, normally in our principal's report, we have the attendance and the discipline. But in October, we will combine August and September, as we have in the past couple of years. But just wanted to bring forward to you, we had our curriculum night. This year, we decided to keep that a virtual curriculum night. So there were videos placed online, a online catalog on the website, which was very positive. A lot of feedback from our parents. They enjoyed that they didn't have to come into the building and could actually watch the videos at their own leisure and actually have an opportunity to re-watch some of the videos. So curriculum. So curriculum night was a success. John will talk about in just a minute, but we're very excited that next week is our homecoming week. So the theme is get groovy. But we're looking forward to bringing back some of our traditions and establishing a culture of Porter pride again. And then parent-teacher conferences. We are going to do those for the second time virtually on October 7th. So from 3:00 to 8:00, parents will have the opportunity to sign up for slots, and they will have 10 minutes with our teachers online.
As Carrie had mentioned, we are very excited for homecoming week next week, beginning on Monday, the 27th. Some of our traditional exciting events that we have throughout the week will return. Monday, we have our poster night to decorate around the school, both campuses. We have moving night at Porter Stadium on Tuesday, next Tuesday. We have our Powder Puff football game. We have a variety show next Thursday here in the auditorium. The week caps off with Friday, Saturday. We have our home football game against Lincoln Way West. And then Saturday, we are going to have our outdoor homecoming dance. So we're really excited about homecoming week next week. In terms of athletics, our fall season is off to a great start. Boys cross-country finished second in the preseason conference meet. The girls finished first. Boys and girls golf have both won invitationals to begin the season. And in fact, the girls were competing in the conference meet today. Football is off to an outstanding start. All three levels are a combined 12-0 to begin the season. So that's brought a lot of excitement. Our boys soccer team is undefeated and won back-to-back prestigious Windy City championship tournament. So they're excited about that. Girls swimming and diving and girls volleyball are off to strong starts. Our girls volleyball team just beat Manuka tonight, beat Andrew last week in a highly competitive game, and won three games at the Mother McCauley Tournament over the weekend. And I believe I'm missing, girls tennis is looking to continue their string of sectional championships. So that is a little recap of how well the fall season, and we're looking forward to next month to share some more great results with you.
Thank you. And then to our information report, review of our summer curriculum work.
Hello again. So I shared some detailed information with you in a chart regarding the summer curriculum work that our teachers engage in. And I painted some broad strokes for you in the report along with the chart. I just really wanted to highlight three new programming pieces for you. The first was our literacy coaches and the work that they did this summer. Basically, our literacy coaches are a dedicated partner for teachers. They meet teachers where they're at. They hear what are their concerns with students in literacy in the classroom and provide them with some best practice strategies to improve teaching and learning for all students. We've had an overwhelmingly positive response to the volunteers to come in and join the first cohort with the literacy coaches. We have 18 teachers who will be meeting together quarterly to work on this and then individually weekly with our literacy coaches to improve their practice. So we're really excited about that. I also wanted to talk to you that we are doing ELL co-teaching. This is very similar in nature to our co-teaching between a special education teacher and a general education teacher with all the same great opportunities for students and to be more inclusive of our student body. This year, we do have two sections, and they're occurring in freshman English and sophomore English. And lastly, I was going to share a little graphic with you, but we don't have a projector. But just some really cool work being done by our special ed department, particularly in the CCC. They're using bitmojis to help students identify the feelings that they're having. This goes along with the social-emotional learning we're doing in all classrooms. They also have built a stress relief room for their students to access. Again, very similarly to what we're trying to engage our whole student body with. Did you have any questions about the summer curriculum work?
Very detailed, but thank you.
All right, great. And our last speaker didn't even know we were on the agenda, but we are. I'm going to speak about the same topic, which is community service. I just wanted to share with you, you know, I kind of reviewed where we went over the past couple of years in terms of the graduation requirement for community service. And then I tried to share with you also how we try to be flexible, creative, adaptive with the times. One of the things I'm most proud of is I think we've really thought, how can we have students support their peers, especially during this time? Dr. McBride was talking about some of the challenges earlier with COVID-19 and quarantine and busing and other situations. So really trying to get students to provide support to their students in the classroom and also outside of the classroom, providing some tutoring. We've also, Ms. Sermon just shared with me today, we have volunteer opportunities for our students in the library. This was something new that was also created. And finally, I just wanted to affirm the language because we did, through these times, we've made some changes in clarity. And I put that language there for you as well that we will be sharing. Do you have any questions? One last thing if I can highlight just quickly is Tranzio has been successful at being able to advertise all the different community service opportunities and for community to tap in and tell us when they have opportunities for our students. So thank you for supporting that.
Thank you. The 2021-2022 union dues certification to educational employer.
In essence, what this does is just certify that the process and that our staff members are paying their union dues. So it forms the board that that's happening through a payroll reduction. That process is going on. That certificate has been, you know, supplied by Karen Cooper, who is president, represents our union. Any questions?
Next, we have the Public Act 97-259.
Correct. As part of the Open Meetings Act, there is a requirement that administrator and teacher salary benefits have to be posted on our website and be publicly available. That report is ready and will be posted. But also, that is just informing the board that that will be completed and done and posted on our website. Any questions?
Maintenance report.
The maintenance report. Mr. Thompson has put together another great maintenance report. It's still very, very busy. Really, what's the focus? The technology assistance center, the library, the coffee shop, that our special education department and our students from CCC will be working on. We're putting all the finishing touches. That's a lot of unpacking, fixtures, furnitures, things like that, light fixtures that need to go in, final equipment for the coffee shop. We finished the structural repairs at Central. That's mainly masonry work. That is all wrapped up. And mainly window work that needed to be done around those. A lot of tuck pointing, a lot of making sure that that's in good shape. Then finally, we have moved into what's called the Seamless Summer Option. That is the national school lunch program that allows during the pandemic, all of our students to receive free lunches. We're doing right now about 1,800 meals a day under that program. We will have an Illinois School Board of Education auditor coming, I believe, on September 22nd to review our implementation. We are trying to resolve the issue of the wood panels. After years of negotiation and frustration, those wood panels in the courtroom are not lying flat. We are remediating that. Replacing locker room countertops, looks great in a lot of our locker rooms. Doing some stucco repair and then doing some roof repairs. You can see from tonight's meeting, roofs are a theme, not unimportant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, next we have the capital project expenditure and inter-fund transfer summaries that this board always gives us every month. And as you can see, there's been expenditures there. Thank you. All right, any announcements that we have?
Announcements, September 1 through October 15, if you can even believe it, we are enrolling the class of 2026. Trish Sermon knows that. September 27, it starts homecoming week. October 2, the fabulous outdoor dance in the parking lot of Mr. Thompson. And don't leave without signing the budget documents.
Thank you. Just need a motion to adjourn.
I'm posting a adjourn.
It's been motion, oh, is it Mr. Travis?
Yep. Mike motioned and Travis second.
All right. Okay. It's been motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.